Can I have a call to order and a roll call?
Maggie Larson.
Yes.
Carrie Clark.
Yes.
Sarah O'Brien-Hart.
Here.
Crystal D. St. Croix.
Here.
Marcia Brown.
Here.
Bridgette Jameson.
Here.
Carly Prescott.
Thank you. Can you all join me in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a clear justice for all.
Okay, should we remain standing?
Yes.
Okay. Let's remain standing. We have... Would you like to do just an introduction into the mic? Is it on?
Absolutely. This is the Maplewood 5th Grade Choir.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was amazing. Well done. Please come to every meeting, but I know that's a lot to ask. That was lovely. Thank you all. At this time, we have time for comments by visitors. Any comments by visitors before we bring up our next crew? All right. I'd like to welcome Coach Rideout and the Somersworth Winter Cheer team up to the microphone. If you can just come up here so we can all hear you. I invited this group, this team, here today after hearing of their amazing feat at States a week or two ago. And I have been able to witness the team and the coach's dedication this season. I've lived here for 16 years. I don't think there has been a championship since then. And we are so incredibly proud of you. This is... You've worked really hard, and your coach has worked exceptionally hard. I was there during that clinic with so many students, and it was exhausting. I don't know how many hours it was, like five or six? Is it five hours? Yep. And growing the program and growing the cheer program. So I wanted to be able to bring you here so the community could recognize this team and this dedication and this Hilltopper proud moment. So Coach, would you like to say anything?
Thanks, Coco. And they keep setting the bar higher and higher for themselves. They put extra hours in at tumbling. They're going to be starting to do open gyms for grades K through 7 every week. So they're extremely dedicated. They are all-around great kids, and I'm very fortunate to be able to work with them. And I can't wait to see how far they go. So thank you so much for the recognition and honoring us tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I know all of you, and I know this is kind of... There's so many people here, but would you like to say any words at all? No pressure. No pressure. Anyone that you're thankful for, anything about your team, or how it's been for you? Come on, Kayla. Hi.
We worked really hard this season, only having a team of seven. But I honestly wouldn't really want it any other way because we're a really good working group. Like, we work really well together.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Nice. Nice. Anyone else? Here we go.
I want to thank Lizzie for showing up and coaching every single day, just as much as my whole entire team, who showed up and practiced their heart out.
Wonderful. Thank you. One more? More? No? No? Any shout-outs? Come on, you're on TV. Thanks.
I'll thank their families and parents and grownups every weekend for showing up and supporting us at competition. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you. It's a small crowd, but it's an important one.
That's amazing. Thank you. And just to be clear, you won Division III. You placed third in Division III.
Yep.
State.
I placed third at Division III State. So you have to place in the top five at prelims to make it to States, and we got fourth. And then, so we went to States and got third. And we didn't even know it until we were, like, all done and on the bus home. Like, oh, guess what? We got third. So very exciting surprise.
Congratulations. We haven't done that in some time, and it's just like, just a testament to your hard work and your guidance and your time and your effort, and I've seen it. So continue up like that. I ask all of our teams and people that, like, and our students, you know, be the mentor, be the exemplar as a Hilltopper all the time, all through the day. Because when you do this and people look up to you, and I'm sure you'll see this in, like, the K, the younger, you're going to be their role model. So continue that up. Yeah. Anything else from the board or anyone?
Mm-hmm. I just have to attest to all the hard work that I have observed as I've been, you know, on the track side. You guys are in the cafeteria, working hard. And it's just a testament that we have such amazing athletes out of such a small school. It's just huge to me. You know, some of these large schools don't have the quantity of high-quality athlete, you know, achievements that we're bringing in. And so I just... I'm very proud of you guys, and thank you for your dedication. And thank you, Coach, for, you know, leading this group into third. It's amazing. Can I also just do a shout-out to 5th Grade Choir? Was amazing. I remember my 5th Grade Choir as an introduction to choir. You brought me back there. You were perfect. Thank you for following your choir director.
Thank you so much. You are welcome to stay for a little bit. We have... This is the packed house that we've had, but we're so proud of you. Be proud of yourself. Continue that on. And I can't wait for fall. Can't wait for fall. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving right on. Comments by board members to start. We'll have another opportunity at the end. All right. Seeing none. The consent calendar. What's the wish of the board to adopt the consent calendar as presented? We have our meeting minutes from March 11th and our policy meeting minutes from March 18th.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented in our packet.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, our reports. Welcome. Thomas Reese.
Thank you very much.
How are you doing? What do you think about sports in our schools?
I'm good. How are you? I think they're phenomenal, and it's right. I mean, small city, great athletes. It's what Somersworth's about.
Yeah, it's awesome. Thank you. Take it away.
For the... Am I doing my student report?
Sure.
All right.
You could do whatever you'd like, but yes, please.
For the Somersworth High School, spring sports have officially started, and we look forward to great starts of the season. We have baseball, softball, and track. Our members of the National Honor Society recently took a trip to Washington, DC. They had a great experience. They were able to see the White House, visit the Capitol, meet with representatives, see the Smithsonian museums. A personal thank you to Scott Sealy, Melanie Chase Benoit, and Christy O'Brien. They were our chaperones, and they really led the whole thing. They made it a great experience. Graduation is right around the corner. It's going to be held June 6th at 6:00 PM at the Winnebago Center at UNH. All seniors and families have received a letter and a calendar with an important end-of-year date. Wednesday, April 9th, Somersworth High School will be hosting our annual spring testing day. Sophomores will be taking the PSATs, juniors the SATs, and the freshmen will take NIEWA testing and have the opportunity to visit the CTE programs. Our seniors will take a day to explore college and career interests. Buses will run on a regular schedule, and lunch will be available to all students in the building. Somersworth High School will be welcoming a visiting team of educators from throughout New England for our NEAS collaborative conference visit. SHS staff will work alongside the visiting committee to identify strengths and determine priority areas with the goal of the continued accreditation. Students in our interact club have been volunteering at Maplewood and reading to the elementary students. It's been a great opportunity to develop connections between students in our school district. Finally, the Somersworth High School class of 2026 will hold prom Saturday, May 17th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at the Portsmouth Country Club. The theme of the event is "A Night to Remember." And a little bit from Idlehurst is, Idlehurst students are spending the month blooming with words. They're earning flowers for practicing to use their I-statements and using their words to work through situations. Kindergarten registration night is April 3rd, 5:30 to 6:30. It's a great opportunity to meet the staff toward the building and get all your paperwork filled out. And there will also be a chance for some parents to get fingerprinted if they wish to volunteer in the next school year. Curious George is coming to visit Idlehurst on April 12th. Doors will be open 10:00, and there will be snacks, crafts, and a book reading at 10:30, and this is a completely free event. And remember, in order to find out the latest and greatest news, follow us on Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll move into our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Thomas. Three calendar dates I want to highlight for starters. Just want to make sure that everybody... A reminder that Tuesday, May 6th, Tuesday, May 6th, which is a little ways out, was originally a school day, but it will now be a no-school day for kids and a teacher-workshop day for staff. Tuesday, May 6th, no school. That is because of the special election that the governor called for New Hampshire. House District Number 12 and Idlehurst and the high school are both polling stations. So that's a teacher-workshop day. We'll remind you as that gets closer. Just getting outward now to the schools, and I'll be reaching out to all parents and community members, but we're going to host... I'm going to host a forum next week on Wednesday, April 2nd at 6:30 PM. Wednesday, April 2nd at 6:30 PM. An informational forum for community members that are interested. There's a lot going on in the world right now, and if you want to better understand what the U.S. Department of Education does and what the implications are for Somersworth for potential elimination of the department and/or reduction of grants, we just want to get that information in the hands of folks so they can follow along themselves, if you're not already. There's a lot happening in Concord with educational freedom accounts and the adequacy funding system. Again, just want to share information and let folks know what's going on. Also want to remind you that if you ever have any reservations or opinions about things happening at the federal level or at the state level, who the people are to contact to make those opinions known respectfully is pretty important. We'll also talk about the Somersworth School District budget for the coming school year that we'll be bringing to the City Council. We work closely with the City Council and respectfully with the City Council, and they have tough decisions to make this year. But we want to make sure folks know what the schools are asking for and why. And we encourage folks to speak up and to reach out to school board members or city councilors respectfully, thoughtfully, and with concerns for their time, with some brevity. And concise is always good to let folks know what you're thinking, whether that's concerned about tax dollars or concerned about school funding. I think that's important. The City Council will be holding a budget hearing on Monday, April 7th at 6:00 PM. So next week, Wednesday, April 2nd, and then the following Monday, April 7th, 6:00 o'clock, are both important opportunities to learn more, speak up, listen in, know what's going on here in Somersworth is pretty important. That's it for dates, and I just wanted to highlight again that Somersworth Middle School was visited by the New Hampshire Eddies Selection Committee as a finalist for one of the best middle schools in the state. This took place last week. It's been a process that the whole middle school has participated in since the beginning of the school year, communicating what they're doing, how they're doing it. It's a pretty amazing group, as we have all across this district. And they're the school this year that threw their hat into the ring for this award. We should be hearing within a week or so, probably. And quite frankly, whether we're one of the top three or four finalists or the winner, it's pretty remarkable that the middle school is where it is right now. They're very proud of the work they put into that. Very last thing, since we have so many Maplewood folks here. I, among others, the school board chair included, were really happy to be part of the literacy night last week. It came a night after the Iguana showed up at Maplewood, so it was pretty tough to get folks out two nights in a row, but there's really good turnout from parents and from kids. I had the humiliating experience of being a reader directly next to Mr. Mumson's classroom in a battle of popularity that I did not come out very well on. And Mr. Mumson, who I always thought was a very humble and respectful person, did not mind rubbing it in that he had more folks in his room than mine. But it was a really wonderful night, and it's great to see the Maplewood students in school, but it's also great to see them outside of school in their pajamas, relaxed with their parents, hanging out. It was a really terrific night and well-attended. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, we won't be too much longer with all this boring stuff, so don't worry. Business administrator update?
Speaking of boring stuff.
Sorry. Yep, yep. Here's math.
It always happens that way. I always follow the kids, and it's not fair. So in your packet is the budget update as of March 21st. As you can see in the report, we were hit with quite a number of additional special ed costs that we weren't anticipating, just under $250,000. Since the last update, I had to encumber contracted services for three RBTs totaling over $100,000, three additional out-of-district placements totaling $115,000. There were also three additional homeless students identified needing transportation, which resulted in a cost of about $30,000. On top of that, we also received an unexpected invoice from another district for some students who were court-placed. Somersworth students court-placed into another district. I... An invoice showed up for services as well as tuition, totaling for the year of about $121,000. We're still determining what we need to pay for that. We've heard that we won't be able... We won't have to be charged the tuition, but just the services. So we're still working out the details of that. So I will update the board as soon as I know the final cost for that. Obviously, these are major changes to the budget solely in the year. So we're keeping a close eye on the budget. John and I are going to be meeting this week to look at the budget, see where we're at, if we need to make any decisions. And I'll update the board again in April. I usually do the second meeting, but I will do the first meeting in April so that way it's... And the second meeting, so that we are up to date on where we're at. Revenue. Since the last update, we did receive additional revenue in the area of the CTC programs for students that come to our programs. This was an area we did adjust in next year's budget because we have been seeing that we've been getting an increased amount each year. So we did adjust that revenue for next year's budget. And then I did want to just give a shout-out to Caitlin Carrington, our CTC director, for taking advantage of some grants that we were able to get through the state of New Hampshire for transportation for our CTC program. So she was able to get two different transportation grants totaling $64,798.70, which is helping to defray the cost of the district for transporting our students to the CTC centers. So I just wanted to thank her for that work that she did.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Thank you, Caitlin. All right. Moving to... Moving through committees, unless I only see that Policy Committee needs an update that we have met. But would you... Would you mind doing that at Policy Adoption at that area, if we can move Policy... The Policy Committee update under 7? Okay. Any other committees that we've... That we need an update on? I don't think so. We haven't had any meetings. So we can actually start to welcome Maplewood Elementary School. Welcome. Did you... Screen? Perfect. Okay, put it down.
Really short. Good evening, school board. My name is Doug McNally. I'm the principal of Maplewood Elementary School. This is Max Ferguson, our assistant principal. We are here tonight to do our annual presentation around Maplewood Elementary School. I chose March this year, thankfully, because it is Music in Our Schools Month. Music starts at Maplewood, I would say. We do have K through 5 general music. However, we have a 4th grade chorus, a 5th grade chorus, a 4th grade band. In a 5th grade band, for me, our concerts are some of my favorite events of the school year. And I truly appreciate the investment that this community has put into music. One of the things that has been wonderful during my tenure at Maplewood has been the evolution of music at our school. When I started, we had a shared classroom. We had two different schools. The classroom was both the art room and the music room. When we reorganized, we lost a lot of space at Maplewood, and music had to go to the stage. I grew up with music on the stage. It is not comfortable for... as a student. But as a part of our construction at Maplewood, the school board agreed with me and said it would be awesome if we could add a music room. And now we have this beautiful space that has dedicated classroom, dedicated storage. It is an amazing place for music to be for our elementary students. I want to introduce our three music professionals in our building. Kate Posse is our first-year general music teacher. Mark DeTurk is our band director. And Brenda LaForce is our chorus director. And I... We're very short presentation tonight. I'm going to... We're going to end with a performance from a quartet led by Mr. DeTurk. These are just some numbers as far as students who are participating. Keep in mind that we have under 100 5th graders. So currently, 17 kids participating in chorus is pretty amazing. Similarly, in band. So we have... I feel we have a pretty strong music program happening in Maplewood, and it is because of those three people. It's because parents rent instruments, ask their kids to practice, and we find a lot of value in that, and we are appreciative. So with that, I'm going to let Mr. DeTurk and his four gentlemen saxophone players take it away.
I think we're ready. It seemed unreasonable to bring the entire 5th grade band here. Lots of drums and a lot of trombones. So instead, we brought you the saxophone section of the 5th grade band.
One second.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you. This is the saxophone section, actually, the alto saxophone section of the 5th grade band. They'd like to play two very short songs for you. They're songs I'm sure you will recognize. First, we're going to make sure the instruments are still working. All right, I think we're ready. I'm sure you'll know these tunes, so maybe I won't even introduce them. We'll play "Name That Tune." "Name That Tune"? "Swing Low Sweet Chariot," yes. Tune 2. So that was... That's a lesser-known. Yeah, yes. "All Day All Night." That's two spiritual tunes, "Swing Low Sweet Chariot" and "All Day All Night." And we discovered these pieces are partner songs, which is to say they play well together, which is something we value in elementary school students, right?
Can I just say thank you?
Yeah, that was amazing!
Yes, please.
Can I just say thank you very much to the saxophonists before you leave?
Here, saxophonists. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up.
Can I just tell them a very brief story about a high schooler who came to school with this, like, exotic instrument called the saxophone? Then fast-forward 40 years, I saw him on a poster in a band room. It was Jeff Coffin, because he grew up in Rochester High School. And he made a career, a music career, out of it. And now he's with a famous band. And so I see you here, and if you guys stick to it. I mean, if a local guy can, you know, make it big in a band, you guys can too, if you chose to do that. But that was delightful music.
Wonderful. That was wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Yep, well done. You're not... You're staying up here. I'm going to have you sit up here. Yep. O'Brien-Hart.
My school's not big enough to have a band or a chorus. And I just... I think it's great that you guys have this opportunity. And thank you so much for getting up here in front of us and playing for us. Thank you, guys, too, for getting up and singing in front of us. You know, I was looking through my wife's diary with her yesterday, and we were reading about how band and chorus were the special places for her, how she feeling like she didn't have many friends would have lunch in the chorus room and make friends with the band teachers and the band students. And even though she didn't play an instrument, she would hang out with the piano people. And then she'd sing in chorus. She was always late. She failed because she was always late to chorus, but she still loved it. And I just think what a cool opportunity you all have to do something amazing and bring something cool to the world and have a safe place with these amazing teachers, too. So thanks to all the teachers and all the students, and thanks, everybody, for coming. So...
Great. Thank you. Well done. We're still going to say stuff.
I just want to say thank you for coming. And I don't know if people know that, but playing saxophone is pretty hard. Do you think it's pretty hard? I think it's pretty hard. Yeah.
Two years?
Great job.
And can I have the chorus come over for a second? You were so amazing, and I know this is like one of the things. You don't have to be prepared, but is anyone... Is anyone ready to say kind of what, like, music means to you when it's, like, brought to your life? If anyone, like, to say, like, you know, how long have you been doing this? One year, two years? Anyone longer? Two years? Two years mostly? Yeah. What do you... What does this mean to you? What does music mean to you? Come here. Come over to my mic.
When I'm singing, I feel like... Or playing my trumpet, I feel like I am in a different world or by myself. I feel like I am in a different world or by myself. Because I pull up in my room, I'm by myself and I'm happy and I'm just playing.
Chorus makes me like, it's like a happy place and it like helps me a lot. And I love singing with my friends. And it just makes me happy.
Amazing. Thank you. Thank you.
When you sing, you can dance. And when you dance, you can sing.
That's right.
Yeah.
When I'm singing, I feel like I'm in like my own world. And me and my friends have gone to like different concerts and stuff. And it's just so fun to like experience singing in front of people.
When I'm singing, I feel like I'm in a different world and it's happier and it's full of love.
We both play trumpet together. So. Yeah. Well, when I play or sing, I like feel good about myself.
Ever since I started singing, I liked singing more. And I've played trumpet for I think two years now. And it's really fun in all the songs we play.
Oh, that's amazing. And you know what's going to go? What grade are you in now?
Uh, 5th.
So then you'll go to the middle school. In middle school, middle school music's pretty amazing as well. I've kind of heard that. Any saxophone? You are all incredible. Years? Have you only been playing for two, three years, really?
Yeah.
Sound great. Are you going to stick with it?
Yeah.
They're the best ones.
Better. You are amazing.
You are amazing. Anything you'd like to say to your instructors?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're amazing.
Can you say one more thing? Yep, quickly.
I also thank my fellow band members, members and chorus members because they stick with us. And they... Yeah, too. And I just want to thank everyone.
All right. Round of applause.
I would just like to thank all of our instructors because we couldn't have done this without them.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Does Maplewood win? No, just kidding. That was amazing. That was great. Anything else?
One more thing. I have one more thing. Can you guys come back each time? You bring so much joy. Come back now. No, no, no. But thank you for coming. You bring so much light to sometimes a very boring meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, families. Thank you all. You are welcome to stay, but you can go home. Take care. Thank you, everyone.
Can we just... No, no, I just want to say... I just, I just want to say thank you for the members in the public that came up and spoke to us about helping. And we've just exchanged information about how they can contact the superintendent. Sorry, you know, for the sidebar on TV, but I just wanted to put that period on the sentence.
Because music and additional opportunities for kids are so important, even with limited funding. Yeah.
Oh, you are? Okay. Well, yeah, I just want to say, Board, can we waive rules to have a member speak? Just make a motion and waive rules? Okay. Second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. We'll waive just because it's in the middle of our meeting, but go for it. Absolutely. Is your microphone on? Is it green light? Perfect.
How about no? Okay. So I am the mother of a former Summersworth student, Nyla, who graduated, and she's about to actually graduate in May with her bachelor's from BU. She got a full scholarship coming out of the Summersworth Music Program. She plays the tuba. And one of these lovely kids were one of, were a saxophone player. That's my child as well. And there's no way she would have been interested in the tuba or introduced to the tuba if it wasn't for the, well, it was Matt Lagard at the time. And they're still great friends. And she has her recital on Thursday, her final spring recital before graduation. And she's actually very excited to take a gap year and hopefully get involved in the high school and, you know, middle school and even elementary school music programs to help out in, you know, in any way she can because she really wants to, you know, show that she's very thankful for her opportunity she got from Summersworth. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you so much. Thank you for saying that. Thank you. Give her her best and have her come back. Have her come and play. Okay, you have my contact. Thank you. Thank you, Board, for allowing for that. Where are we? Okay. So we have many policies this evening, but don't be overwhelmed. Many are required by law with very minor edits. None of them are something that we made on our own or made such drastic content revisions that would take anything. So we have a number for first reading. But we moved, you know, the Policy Chair Brown's Policy Committee update right here for 5F. So Board Member Brown, if you'd like to just kind of give the update overall for policy and then we can get into it.
Fine. I'm going to start with the policies that were from first reading because we do have the Policy Committee meeting minutes that we had in the consent calendar. And the meeting minutes reflect all of the policies that we have now on our agenda for first reading. Policy AC, ACA, ACF, ACR, and then GBAM, GBAM rather, and IHBCA. And again, for the public that doesn't understand the policy, lettering, titles, this comes from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. We didn't pick the titles like ACF and ACA. But the titles are what they are. And there's a, you go to our school board website or SAU 56 website, go to the school board, go to the policies, and you can see the subject matters for those. So with respect to AC, Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity Employment and District Anti-Discrimination Plan, there were just a few changes in that because Department of Education rules have also changed in light of court cases. And the only changes in this one were to change to Human Rights Officer. And then to clarify the titles, when I say title, the statute references, to be clear. So those were the changes that we suggested for that. Because Human Rights Officer, Kat, correct me if I'm wrong, Humans Rights Officer was not in it. We were adding that, correct? Okay, Kat's giving me the motion, yes, correct. So very minor changes to AC. If I can move on in my policy report. With respect to policy ACA, this is the Discrimination and Harassment Grievance Procedure. So after we did all of that updating in the fall to reflect the summer 2024 Department of Education rule changes, they were subsequently, the process was found to not have been due process. And so the edits, the revisions were unconstitutional. So we had to back those out. And so we backed those out of ACA and then also AC... No, sorry. No, just ACA is here. And I know, Kat, you said I could rely heavily on you. Can I just, because we had one section on the Level 3 appeals that we added to it. So in addition to clarifying things, we had to add that process because I think they removed one appeal process or something? I'm sorry to have you. I'm on electronic page 44 of our packet.
Oh, I'm just going to go right to the policy to make it quicker. Yes, we had to add in Section D, we had to add some new definitions around complaint and the process and how it refers to AC and also Policy JICK.
Thank you. And I just want to do another shout out for our committee because, you know, many hands makes light work. And with Kat, the administrators, you know, from the school building administrators on the team, it's just a very thoughtful, efficient processing of these policies so we can kind of keep up with the pace of the changes. I want to move on to the next policy, which is ACF, which is the Food and Nutrition Services Anti-Discrimination Civil Rights Complaint Process. Again, this is more complaint process-driven. So there were changes made on Page 1 because we could not, okay. Discrimination is prohibited where it formerly included gender identity and sexual orientation. That is no longer allowed in the law to be a basis. So we had to strike that out. And we did a little bit of updating on it. But other than trying to make it more compliant with the federal laws that were changed on us, it was lightly edited. Now, ACR is a kind of a form, announcement, a notice form. And so it's not a real substantive policy. So that just had to be changed to retitle Assistant Superintendent to the Humans Rights Officer, which meant that Kat just changed her hats. She's the same person. With respect to GBAM, we added "medical" to the title. And that, that one was it. Okay. And then on...
It also got changed. It's no longer priority required by law. It's now recommended.
Oh, oh, thank you very much for that. And then Policy IHBCA for first reading is Accommodation of Pregnancy and Related Medical Conditions for Students. And that is now recommended and not required by law. And that was the only change, was that notation in the header. There was no change to the substance of the policy. So that is it for first reading. And again, thanks to the great team on the Policy Committee to deal with so many policies needing to be changed in such an efficient way. Thank you. All right, great. So first reading, do I have a motion to read these by title only as a first read? Or would you like to read the entire thing in its entirety?
I see some clarity. So when we read by title only, are we going to have opportunity to discuss?
Sure. We'll do it. We'll read by title only. And then if there's discussion, open it to that. So we'll go per policy. I'll make a motion to read by title only. Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion about that? So reading by title only, we'll go through each first read, read the title. And if there's a discussion or clarity, we can, I'll open the board, you know, to ask questions about that. All in favor, say aye? Aye. All right, so, yep. I will read the first policy by title only. It's AC, which is Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity Employment and District Anti-Discrimination Plan. Any questions on this one? Just let me know. Okay. Thank you. All right. Go through. Next policy for first reading, ACA, Discrimination and Harassment Grievance Procedure.
I do have a question on this one. So was this the one that we struck out due to, you know, sex or discrimination of like race member? There's one in here. I'm trying to find it.
No, it's not this one.
Okay, thank you. Which? I just saw it. Find it. My lovely phone here.
I think it may be...
Well, it's not the one...
ACF. Yeah. Next one. Okay. All right, so ACA. If we can go into ACF. Yep. We'll read it by title only and then move on. Okay, next policy is ACF, Food and Nutrition Services Anti-Discrimination Civil Rights Complaints. Yes.
So can you speak to why that was changed? Why that was struck out other than just from the NHSBA?
The federal law changed.
Okay. And then...
Does it say that in red down here? It's kind of...
Just so the families understand what that means? Yeah.
Can I share that we did discuss during Policy Committee?
I would love that. I think they would love that.
The implications of leaving it in and essentially significant funding would be at risk. So we can't, as a district, rise, we can't say like, this is our minimum. We want to go above that, right? We want to say we're also going to protect discrimination based on those things because it's a potential funding risk.
Just for clarity, for family's sake, for out, you know, watching in or understanding, that clarity is always needed because we don't know unless we read all those minutes or we're there in the meeting. Okay, thank you for that.
Which is the reference that we can point people to at the bottom of this policy? I see the statutes, but the, which statute kind of directs our change to this? There are many statutes here, but which was the statute that we can reference for people that ask why? I'm looking it up. Yep. I, the, it says the New Hampshire statutes right now. I don't see any federal code, but this was a federal. Wait. I don't remember the RSAs, our New Hampshire... USDA? Is that the USDA reference or do you remember? I think the reason why we had to strike on the first page, the reference to gender identity and sexual orientation. My recollection is that it was jeopardizing any federal funding if we allowed discrimination cases to be brought based on those two items. Through the USDA? Is that... Department of Ed? Is it Department of Ed? It looks like it's USDA rooted. We can come back to that and get answers because it is first reading for our second reading and have that be clarified as like a statement to say why we did that. You know, why it's going on in there. Because sometimes so many things change. But to have...
Because sometimes so many things change, but to have reference back, yeah.
Thank you for that comment, for that question.
All right, so now we are under ACR.
Okay. Next policy is AC-R, parentheses two, non-discrimination, equal opportunity employment and anti-discrimination plan, annual notice of contact information.
Okay, any questions? This isn't the only time, but if there is, please email, you know, Chair Brown if there's, you know, and maybe Assistant Superintendent Crosby for, with clarity. We can do this publicly, but if we don't get it to, we'll bring it up at our next meeting as well. All right, two more.
Okay, the next policy is GBAM, accommodation of pregnancy and related medical conditions for personnel.
Questions, okay.
The next policy by title is IHBCA, accommodation of pregnancy and related medical conditions, students.
Great, thank you. All right, moving to question anywhere, nope. Second readings, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, six for adoption this evening. Do I have a motion to read these by title only? But we can have a discussion and clarity still by title only. Okay, great.
Aye, second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, for member Brown.
Policy ACAC for second reading, prohibition of sexual harassment policy grievance procedures.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this policy as presented? Oh, is your microphone on?
I motion to accept this policy as presented.
Okay, great, a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Next policy for second reading is IJL, library materials selection and adoption.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept IJL, library materials selection and adoption? Thank you to our media specialists and, well, should I thank for creating this? Media specialists were the ones and librarians helped revise.
Yes, they were the ones that came forward to further revisions.
Media, okay, I didn't want to make anyone else, all right. All right, motion to accept IJL.
Motion to accept IG.
IJL? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. It's adopted.
Next policy is JICD, student discipline and due process.
Motion to accept JICD?
Motion to accept JIC.
JICD, yep.
C D. Second.
Any discussion about JICD? This is the student discipline and due process. I know, we've changed, we've reviewed it many times. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, JICD is adopted, three more.
Okay, next policy is JL CJ, concussions and head injuries.
All right, this is, all right, this is a long one, but it is, is it required by law? Actually, I don't have it in front of me.
It is required by law.
Yes, okay, stay safe. Do I have a?
I'll make a motion to accept the revisions to policy JL CJ.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I would like to say if there's any funding or, you know, conditioning of equipment or anything to, for concussion prevention, that is for one, a priority of this one board member to be able to make sure that all the, whatever we need to keep our kids safe is attended to. All right, all in favor of accepting JL CJ? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Next policy for second reading is KEC, reconsideration of instructional materials.
Okay, motion to accept KEC.
Make a motion to accept policy KEC as revised in our packet.
Second.
Any discussion, KEC? Being done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Next policy is Form KEC-R, request for reconsideration of instruction materials.
Motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept policy KEC-R as presented in our agenda packet.
Second.
Any discussion about this? This is the, this is for the public, so, you know.
So this looks one, this one looks like it's just read through, is that true? Like nothing was actually changed?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, there's no changes except, you know, the source or policy history notes where we're updating that we've read this. Thank you.
We've reviewed it, yep. Sometimes we just, the review is part of it and even though no change, all right. That's it. Do we have a first and second to adopt?
Did I?
Yes, we did, that was discussion, I think I can say all in favor, thank you, it was a lot of them. All in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you, that was the most policies we went to, thank you to the policy committee, thank you for all of this. This is many, many ones that are required or that we just have to review, so a lot of work there. Moving on to new business, 8.1 of the approval of E-Rate vendor for the tech upgrade project, phase two, Katie.
I handed out a memo to you before, yeah. Sorry, it didn't make it in the packet, but we didn't get the information until on Monday, so. So this is for our IT phase two projects that were approved back in the fall with our adequacy funds. In order for us to get E-Rate, we had to go out to RFP for the project. So our E-Rate consultant did that, the bids were due back on March 20th. We received five bids from five vendors, E Plus Technology, Telephone and Network Technologies, New England Communications, Source One and Wally Computer Associates. E-Rate requires that we do an evaluation on a matrix of all of the bids that we received. Chad from Newview and I met on Monday morning to review the bids. Chad went through and provided the results of the matrix and compared each vendor based on price, functionality, implementation timeline, their qualifications, the terms of the contract, the quality of the documents that were proposed. And after reviewing the matrix, we are recommending that we go with Source One as the vendor. They quoted us using, and again, I'm speaking tech talk, so bear with me, but they're using an Aruba branded solution which provides the most value over the life of the equipment. It has newer features, available support, lifetime warranty and longest service life of the bids we receive. So each vendor bid on different types of equipment. So Chad's recommending we go with this one due to the brand of the equipment. He says after installation, it's going to provide strong wireless to all our classrooms, meeting spaces and community areas for years to come. This is not an approval of the purchase for the board, it's just approving us to move forward with this vendor. Once we select the vendor, then we start to narrow down the project with the cost. We may have to bear, you know, pare back a little bit depending on what we have for a quote from them. We get 60% reimbursement through E-Rate and then the district provides the rest of the funding, which was already been approved. So once we finalize the quote, we'll bring that back to the board for approval of the final quote from the vendor. Yeah. So again, I'm just looking for the board to approve and it has to be done tonight. So you will have to suspend rules because I have to provide our E-Rate vendor with the results tomorrow in order to move forward. It's a tight timeline, but it's based on the E-Rate timeline, not ours. So we typically would not do this, but again, it's based on E-Rate and getting this funding. So the, on the bottom of my motion, on the packet, it's, you know, we're looking for a motion for the board to approve Source One as the service provider for the 2025 E-Rate category two RFP filing window.
I motion to suspend rules.
Do we, do we know like a general, how much?
It's going to come in right as we budgeted, so there's a hundred and ninety.
That's good to know.
Yeah, there's $191,000 earmarked for this project in budget funds. The rest is going to come from the E-Rate reimbursement.
We have a first and, yep.
Was the second, just reminders, we can present that again, but it was the second phase of everything we brought forward approval. We did first phase in July and second phase in the fall.
That's why I said we may have to pare back if the quote comes in higher than we may have to.
Higher than, okay.
Because it's going to fit exactly what we budgeted, it's not going to be over, you know, it's going to be exactly.
Thank you. All in favor of suspending rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So you're looking for board approval to move forward with Source One?
She's looking for a motion to approve Source One as a service provider for the 2025 E-Rate category two RFP filing window.
So request for proposal, got it. Jeez Louise.
I made a motion.
What is Source One?
That's the name of the vendor.
Right.
Are they like a? Are they a company in just, that's all right, it's just, okay, all right. Well, we, if we, we have to do it to move forward.
Marshall, do you want to go again?
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion.
She made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? I mean, okay, all in favor? I have lots of questions, maybe for next time, but what's, but yes, to explore it, and it's required to do it. All in favor, say aye. Source One, yep. Sure, why not? Okay, that's it. 8.2 is an agenda item I added for a consideration for school assessment by an independent agency. This is coming from city council. Our city council representative was not able to make it tonight, this evening. So I can, I can keep this on new business for our next agenda item. They would like clarity of how our schools are doing and maybe an independent assessment, whatever that looks like. And if it's coming from city council, I would be happy to consider that and, you know, see what that actually means and what data is needed. And if funding could come from the city, that would be, that would be great. I just wanted to have it be on our agenda.
Can we discuss?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I, how generous, I think, of the city to offer that up. I think that, I think that that's a great idea. I'd love to see it be like an independent educational agency. And I think if I could just add, could I just add some comments about it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Clarity, yep.
So it's just, I mean, I, yeah, clarity would also be great of what they're looking for, but it's, I've worked in the school. I've worked in other districts and I do know exactly how much Summersworth is doing with very little. I also have repeatedly encouraged people to come in, like check out our budget, tell us what we're doing wrong. Tell us where we can save money, where we can make cuts. And I would really welcome an outside educational agency because I am pretty confident that I know what a report like that is going to demonstrate. And it's going to be that we are critically underfunded and are providing an excellent education regardless of that. And I would also encourage people who have concerns about that to, you know, really not look to the local community because I think that taxpayers are doing everything that they can. I think that people on the school board are doing everything that they can. And I would just love to see that directed towards the state for fair adequacy funding. Yeah, that's, that's kind of my take on that. But I would, I would say that would be phenomenal to get that data on the record if the city would like to pay for it. That's very generous.
Absolutely, yeah, this came from clarity of Monday, Monday night's city council asking if, that Councilor Vincent asked for potential assessment by an independent agency to look, but, yeah, for member Prescott.
What kind of assessments would the city council like to see that is not already available on the Department of Education's website?
That, that would be great clarification. I think we need clarity from them and we'll run that, these questions through our city council. Parity Kenzero to ask what they would like to see and we can get like details of that. I just wanted to have it be a consideration for the board tonight. O'Brien Hart and then Clark.
Yeah, you know, I just would like to agree with Board Member Jameson and, you know, I fully believe in transparency and I think this is a very generous offer and I'm open to, as a board member, whatever transparency we can provide. And I think it will further back up our case that our schools are critically underfunded and provide concrete evidence if it's something that is not available on the education website, that we need help from the state and we need the state to step up and meet their obligations, so.
I just want to say thank you for the clarity. I don't think that many people in the public understand what that would look like and what that means. So I think, thank you for, right, I wouldn't know what that one meant, so I appreciate that.
Also, it just, it seems like it might increase like the tax burden as well. So I think that that's a concern for voters, you know, if the city is going to pay for an outside audit of sorts, yeah.
Thank you. All right. All right, moving to old unfinished business, the consideration of the pre-K tuition agreement with SAU 104 Superintendent Shea, do you have an update?
Yeah, the SAU 104 School Board Rollinsford approved at their last board meeting moving forward with the tuition agreement as you've got it in your board packet, which is what we went over board meeting ago. So it would be, and I'll kind of hit the key points here again and answer any questions, but it would be for the Summersworth School Board to decide this evening to thumbs up it as well. And the next step would be both school boards signing off on the agreement. By way of reminder, it would be a one-year agreement just for the 2025-26 school year. And again, you've got this in your board packet and we went over it at a board meeting ago. It's specifically for Rollinsford pre-K identified students, not for Rollinsford pre-K unidentified students. The identification process, the child find and whole evaluation and referral will be handled by Rollinsford through their special education services, which will now be provided by MSAD 35, not through, not through Summersworth. The tuition that we had discussed last go around is $2,600 a year for the two-day-a-week program, $5,000 a year for the four-day-a-week program. And that's just the base foundational amounts to participate in the year-long preschool, pre-K program. With a reminder that all special education services are charged directly to Rollinsford separately. And, yeah, that's it.
Transportation is also charged directly to Rollinsford as well.
So in order to open up discussion, I'd need a motion to support the consideration of the pre-K tuition, the MOU agreement with SAU 104. Do I have a motion?
Is it to support consideration or is it?
Support the agreement, yeah, no.
Or to approve this contract, this draft contract?
I think it's, right, we have to both sign it. So the wording would be approve the contract as presented. Approve the, you know, tuition agreement.
Thank you for that clarification. I will make a motion to approve the preschool tuition agreement, parentheses for identified students between the Summersworth School District and Rollinsford School District as presented in our school board packet at electronic pages 102 through 104.
Thank you, do I have a second, you know? Second by Clark, all right, any discussion, any discussion about this, yes?
How's the invoicing and payment going to work? Are we going to, I just want to make sure, are we getting the money?
It will work the same way it does now where we bill through our office directly to Rollinsford. Right now, we're billing each other because we're doing services for both districts, but I will be, we will be billing from our office to their new SAU office, just like we do now.
Okay, all right, I just thought that in the past, there was a, an issue with the invoices not going out. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Nope, we've always billed them for their Rollinsford identified students.
All right, thank you.
The amount was the question part, the billing was occurring, but the.
For the tuition, the billing has always been occurring. They've been paying every year for to Summersworth for their identified students for the tuition.
We were billing for their identified students for a tuition, but we weren't being reimbursed for the special ed services that we were providing. Would that be more clear?
We are being reimbursed this year, yes, $19,000.
As of mid-year.
Correct.
This year, okay. Okay. All right, any other?
Okay, so does the, probably, right? So does math, does the amount that we are being reimb, just considering our special education costs just went up, does the amount that we're being reimbursed cover what we would have to outlay for the students in staffing and all of that stuff?
Yes.
Yes.
The wash is.
It's a wash, okay.
Built-in wash. The, the base level tuition is, and Rollinsford knows this, is basically the costs rounded up a bit in both the two-day and four-day a week. We rounded up to even number, you know, rough numbers and Rollinsford is aware of that because you've got kind of the negligible friction of just managing the program, so that's kind of built in. And then all special education costs are paid for directly.
Okay, so the two days per week is 2,600 per student per school year. And four days per week, 5,000 per student per school year. And for Summersworth students, there is no cost for tuition for identified students, but there are, there is for students that are not identified, correct? Okay, all right, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, okay. All right, 9.2, I think we just got, passed this out right before. All right, 9.2, I think we just got, passed this out right before the meeting. Fiscal year '26, school budget discussion process, also kind of a request from city council for clarity of enrollment. I would like to have, share this with them as well. Let's do the enrollment piece first, just to kind of go through this 2018 document, which was done by NESTEC, the New England School Development Council. I think that it would be a prudent idea for this to be considered, considered at some point to re, re-engage with an analysis of enrollment. I'm not sure how much of a rush that is right now, but to look, because it goes up through 2028, '29. Any first thoughts on this, or, there was, it's been close, but our enrollment now, I think, is a little less than the 1312, but pretty, pretty close, right?
Are we in discussion right now?
Yeah, so it's no, so for this, for this item, I don't know, it's old, old business. Was it new business before? Should we move it to new business, perhaps, to have a discussion? We can, we can, do you want to move it to new business? Okay, do you want to make that motion, move it to...
I motion to move Summersworth Historical Enrollment to, did you say 8.3?
Right, yeah, let's do 8.3, and I'll, yeah, I'll open it to, to discussion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, yes, go ahead.
I would just like to, to note for everyone that while we do see dramatic declines in enrollment in Summersworth, it is not different from the rest of the state of New Hampshire. We have really declining birth rates in the state, and I've been seeing declining populations in our school, schools for the past 30 years. So, when you look at these, I don't want you to think that it's just Summersworth. The only school districts that are growing in this state are Oyster River, Hanover, Bedford. So, yeah, just wanted to say that.
Is there a trend there, do you think, Board Member Prescott?
Yes, usually the schools with, actually, those are schools with not necessarily lots of property wealth, but have high-income residents living there.
I'm looking for our March 2025 SAU total, pre-K to 12. That also, we, that also includes up to 22 years old for all of our special education students that, that we still have in our, in our, in our, in our school, is 1,275. That, that was like a projection. We have all of our enrollments on our website historically from, what year is this, let's see, I think we have them from, from 2012. So, 2012 is our, you can reference each enrollment from there. Any other questions or discussion? No, okay, good to have.
Need some, a little bit of clarity. So, we're going to share this with council, city council for their knowledge, because they're asking?
Yeah, they're asking about, for budgetary reasons, that we have less students, less students enrolled, and what we're doing to adjust for that in our reductions, and, you know, historically, that's the next piece that we're getting to, our budget history. So, yeah, yep.
Just a quick reminder too, and we're trying to get a more accurate handle on this, but the number of Summersworth pre-K to 12th school-aged children who are not enrolled in Summersworth schools because they're in out-of-district placement, or they're Seacoast Charter Academy, or they're Tri-City Christian, or they are homeschooling, is a number we want to get a better handle on, and it's not insignificant.
And for a number sake, from 2020, March of 2020 to March, wait, hold on, March of 2021 to March this month, we have 60 less kids over the last four years. Board Member Jameson?
Board Member Prescott, can I ask you if other cities and states, or cities and towns with similarly dropping enrollments, just from your professional work, are also having declining budgets?
No, over 60% of New Hampshire's public schools saw their budgets increase last year, regardless of their enrollment decline.
Thank you.
All right, so moving into, this is also a request of budget history and reductions. I really appreciate this. I think this is kind of ramping up for the public and for city council to kind of get a perspective in data, really rooted in data, what we've done. And I've been on board since 2018, so, starting from there, above and beyond, I just asked for, like, how many roughly, how many reductions have we done? But this is kind of the real work through, so, Katie, if you don't mind, kind of, oh.
Sorry, I just, my brain, like, functions super slow sometimes. You asked a great question. Can you clarify that a little bit more? Yes, yeah, so Bridgette asked you a good question. Can you explain that a little more for the public?
Oh, she, so, yeah, so Bridgette just asked that, so it seems that there's been an allusion to the fact that since we have a lowering enrollment, that our budget should decrease. But that's not how it works. We are making our budget with things out of our control, teacher contracts, special education costs that are ever rising. Not many districts, the only districts in this state that see a decrease in their, their budget is if a high-needs student graduates or leaves the district. If that doesn't happen, you won't see school districts decreasing their budget by any, any amount.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
So, what I put together here is just kind of a snapshot of each budget year. Each page represents a different year, from 2018 all the way to the present proposed budget. So, at the top, the enrollment numbers that I put, those are as of October 1 enrollments, because that's what is used for the state when they give us our aid, so that's, I kept that consistent throughout, just to show the change in enrollment throughout the years. Some years, you're just going to see a proposed budget with the reduction. Some years, you're going to see some changes throughout the year, like if we had a supplemental appropriation. You'll see that noted, because I wanted to show, you know, the whole year's budget from where we started to the end. So, I don't know, do you want me to go through the, this document?
Oh, no, thank you, I think if you have any questions...
Yeah, I tried to make it as clear as possible. I just want to note too, that some of the reductions that are listed may not be actual reductions, but they may be things we were proposing, but we couldn't put them in the budget because, you know, so they, they may not be things we had that we had to reduce, but it might be things that we wanted to have, but we couldn't, because we couldn't fit in our budget.
That's Board Member Jameson.
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I just spilled Diet Coke all over my embarrassing math that I was doing, because I was trying to figure out the percent increase and decrease. Do you have those?
I can add those, I can add that to the sheet.
I'm embarrassed to, like, share my math in case it's wrong.
No, I'll add it to the sheet and resend it for you.
Any other? Thank you for doing this. I think, I think a, the other thing is, well, and I can do, but unofficially, is how much we have returned to the city of Summersworth unexpended at the end of the year.
I can get that exact, too, yeah.
2018, just a figure, maybe per year, I had it done years ago, but I, it's, you know, over 5 million, I'm sure, and how much of the reduction. So, I think that snapshot for our community, for us, for council, is just good to see, because these are very, just data rooted in what, what has happened in the last eight years. Any other questions for this? I think the percentages is the update, and I think if we can, if these can be emailed to me, and I can share with our, you know, get to council for, for ayes, and then if we can post this...
I'll put it in the budget tab, wherever, all the other budget documents are on the website.
Wonderful. Anything else from the board for clarity on that, or that? I really appreciate that. I think this is a really good perspective of where we have been, where we are, what we have done, what we've had to manage, so. Okay, future meeting dates, I think. We're going on to future meeting dates, 10. Ed programs, 5:30 Tuesday, April 8, and Tuesday, May 13. Policy, the 14th of April, May 6. Personnel negotiations to be determined. Our next meeting is April 8, April 22, May 13, May 27, and June 10.
Don't forget the public hearing and presentation for council on the April 7 as well.
Okay, April 7 at 6:00 PM. All are, all are invited to be free to speak and, or not to speak, or do whatever you'd like to do respectfully. And you, you can speak whenever you want, I mean, oh, wait, hold on, not yet, hold on, comments by visitors and then you. So, any comments by visitors this evening, be happy to hear you. Don't see any at this point, so comments by board members, Board Member Prescott, you can start.
I would just like to inquire about the Summersworth School Board fleece that you're wearing.
You came too late, we have no money. No, just kidding. Would you, this is, this was the first, yep. Thanks, shout out to Deb and Dukes across, yeah, the school board, how, fleeces, would you like one? Okay, okay. First, second, Prescott, got it? You have to stay on for at least...
Five years.
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah, we'll see, November is an election year. Board Member Jameson, any comments this evening?
I have made plenty, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Brown, no. Oh, yep, Sarah?
Just, I appreciate so much Board Member Jameson and Board Member Prescott for logical thinking and data-driven questions, so thank you both very much.
Okay, buckle up, just kidding. I just want to say thank you to all the students and their friends that came tonight, that was lovely. It was so encouraging to see. I feel like sometimes we get so bogged down in, you know, the heaviness of what we do, and the boringness of what we do with all the math, Katie, and how you do it. But it's so uplifting to see all their amazing things that they're doing, and, you know, they're just carrying on with all the things, and so, yeah, I appreciate them. And I think that we all give great commentary. Okay, just wanted to make sure, like, you guys are also very great, but we are all awesome, anyways, that's it.
Thank you. I will echo that. Thank you, Maplewood. Thank you to our cheer team. I love when this, this, this is a packed house, and I would welcome it in any ways, but to be able to give accolades and community support, that's really why we're doing what we're doing, and keeps us going, and is for our students, for our community, for our staff, and just in general, we can make an impact at this local level, and we have been doing that. Let me know if I dictate too much, or if you feel like I need to be accountable for anything. Welcome any public comment. You will never be gabbled off on my watch unless you are a threat to yourself or someone else. Non-public, we have, we have, we have non-public. I need a motion, and there's going to be three.
I motion to go into non-public.
Per 91A32C, B, C, and L. Is it L?
Thank you for coming.
Or an F? Wait, hold on. It's L, yes. Well, we can go into non-public for that, and let's...
I need a second.
You can go in there. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Maggie Larson, Carrie Clark, Sarah O'Brien-Hart, Crystal D St. Croix, Marsha Brown, Bridgette Jameson, Carly Prescott.
Oh, do we, we don't need to... Yes, yeah, but we don't need to ask for anything. Okay. Thank you, thank you, yes, closed, please.
On or not?
And then microphone.